So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Do you have a statement you need to read first? If I remember correctly.
Is there one of the parties? But I thought I remembered that.
Lindsay, can you please mute your microphone? There we go. I will proceed with the roll call. Gregory Wolfe.
Here.
David Paderas.
Here.
Kelly Rass.
Present.
Brad Miller is absent. Lindsey Grissay.
Here. I'm so sorry for the background noise.
No worries. Fred Sterrett is absent. Stephen McGank.
Here.
Tim Orick.
Here.
Leslie Hind.
Present.
Craig Connell.
Here.
Andrew Logan.
Present.
And Kevin Hogan.
Present.
Thank you. I will proceed with the Zoom statement. This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with planning commission members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or number used to join the Zoom webinar. Please state your name and the community where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to two minutes. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking and please speak into the microphone. So your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting.
And Melissa, good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. Jay Leipzig, the Planning Director. I wanted to make a brief comment this evening about tonight's, the order for this evening. Lindsey Grissay is our chair. He's available on Zoom. Are we, we like to have the precedents to have the chair actually in person if they're, if they're leading the meeting. So since Lindsey is not able to be here in person, that would fall to the vice chair, which is Fred Sterrett, who is also absent this evening. Lindsey has suggested that Gregory Wolfe, Chair of the Meeting, as our longstanding members, I agree with that. So if there are any, any other concerns with, with that approach moving forward, I guess I would, I'd like to pass the meeting over to Greg Wolfe as the, as the chairman for this evening. This is a temporary chairmanship, just to, just to guide us this evening. If you all are in agreement with that, if you have any issues or concerns, but I think that's a good way to move forward. So thank you. I appreciate it. It's a little out of order, out of precedent. Matter of fact, I think this is the first time this has happened in a few years. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to the chairman this evening, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. This is Greg Wolfe, honored to serve as an interim chair tonight. So I will note that we do have an established roll call, I mean established quorum rather. I do want to make a statement before we move on to item C. We do have an agenda item that I understand that many in the community have a strong interest in on item H. I want to make sure everyone knows that we do want to get input from the public. Tonight is not the night. We have not had the presentation yet. This is preliminary. So we are learning as the commissioners, there will be a public hearing. The public hearing will be likely in September, which will be our September meeting. You are also encouraged to provide comment in writing, and there's a process to do that, which is on the website. So by getting up and talking tonight about it, it's, it's early and isn't going to have the impact I would like it to have after we've been educated. So you're going to be talking to folks who are, are cold on the issue, so to speak. So I ask that if you do have comments on agenda item H, you hold those until we have a public hearing. I would also like for the public to have an opportunity to hear what the staff's presentation is. So your comments can be focused on the actual presentation and the items that are in that, as opposed to what you think it might be in there. And we'll learn about this together. So with that being said, we do have a public comment. If someone would like to come up for up to two minutes and give us your thoughts on a non-agenda item, I would welcome that at this time. I think we, do we ask for people live first? In person first. So if anyone in person would like to comment on a non-agenda item, I would welcome them to come to the lecture. Hearing none. Is there anybody on Zoom that is interested in speaking?
No.
Excellent. Any conflict of interest that needs to be disclosed by a commissioner tonight? Hearing, oh, yes, sir.
Commissioner Paderas, I have an ex parte communication to disclose. I was contacted by one of the residents on Edgerton Road with concerns about that agenda item. And I had advised that the best course of action would be for them to send in comments and show up. And I believe a number of them may be here tonight, you know, associated with that. And as you say, to be educated themselves and be able to give better feedback. But I wanted to make sure it was clear that I had been contacted and that was my advice.
Appreciate that disclosure. Any other disclosures? Yes, sir.
I would like to.
If you could identify yourself by name first.
Okay, I'm Kevin Hogan. I am new at the, being on the planning commission. But I sympathize with the people along Edgerton Road. Because I've got the same thing happening in front of my house. But we all have to agree, I think, that we have to, I mean, we have to be a progressive county. We're a great county. And it was shocking for me at first to see that that road was going to be coming down through there. But back in 94, when I built the house, I knew that someday it was going to happen. And it's now happening. So I can't complain too much, right? But I sympathize with the people that live along Edgerton Road and are having to give up a lot of their property, a lot of their way of life, and.
Do you have a specific conflict of interest you want to disclose?
I was just wondering why we haven't considered going a mile west of Edgerton Road.
Let's wait till the presentation before we get into the substance of it. But I'm specifically asking, did you have a conflict of interest?
I do not. No.
Okay, great. And I would encourage you to ask those questions during and after the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
But let's, anybody else have a conflict of interest they need to disclose? Hearing none. I will disclose on the agenda additions and deletions. It's been, and I've been informed that we're delaying the officer elections based on the fact that there are individuals here who are not present, who are current officers. So the item number I on the agenda will be delayed likely to the September meeting. Any other proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I will move to the approval of the minutes. May I entertain a motion to approve the May and June minutes?
We're approving these as one motion?
We can approve them as one motion, yes.
I'd move that the planning commission approved the May 27, 2025 meeting minutes and the June 24, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item G, Comprehensive Plan Annual Review. Jay, are you writing us through that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I had presented this item to the planning commission in quite a bit of detail during the June 24, 2025 meeting. Should recall that, I mean, we did not have a quorum, so we couldn't take official action. The report has remained the same that was originally in the packet on June 17, 2025. Just as a reminder, this is an annual review of our Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan pursuant to KSA 19-2958, which requires the planning commission to annually review the comprehensive plan to determine if any portion of it has become obsolete and to report its findings to the, findings to the Board of County Commissioners. On the last page of this document, I won't go into great detail on it again, because I talked about it at length. But, but the recommendations, there are some things we do need to update on our comprehensive plan. One is to, and I'm on page eight in the, in the report, update Carnap. Review the housing types in the Conference of Johnson County zoning regulations. Review and update the plan's policy area map in response to recent annexations and update the general information and demographics within the plan. So with that, I, if there are particular questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But as I said, I went, went through it in, in great detail. It's a very good report. It talks about the, the annexations and the, the reduction in, in, in those acres throughout the county, and it's a great kind of a resource as well as we move forward. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. There is a motion in your packet on page nine is a suggested motion to, to move this document as being consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then it goes before the Board of County Commissioners. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Please feel free to chime in. Hearing none. Do I hear a motion consistent with the suggested motion on page nine?
Andrew Logan, I moved that the planning commission has completed its 2025 annual review of the Rural Comprehensive Plan, determined that it remains current, is not obsolete. However, certain portions of that plan are in need of updating as recommended by staff. I further moved forward these findings to the Board of County Commissioners.
Greg Connell, aye second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next up is item H. Jay, are you walking us through that one?
Yes, I am, Sir Chairman. Good evening again. This is Jay Leipzig, the Planning Director. Sean Penley is also going to be helping me with this presentation this evening to talk about the comprehensive plan amendments. You might recall, we, we touched on this briefly during our June 26 meeting. We had a presentation from Jeffrey Vos with Public Works Department, who is the engineering manager that walked through the, the recommendations for the proposed in regard to the transportation connection plan. And as we stated at that time, we'd be bringing those, those forward into our updates for our comprehensive arterial road network plan, which is before you this evening. This is a, just a staff presentation for both the changes to our comprehensive plan, our land use plan in chapter two, as well as proposed text amendments to the part one of chapter four, the transportation plan or the Carnap plan. So with that being said, as I, I said last month, we walked through a brief presentation about this, kind of a quick summary. Had a presentation from Public Works this evening is a staff report. We will have, there's a quick review. We're planning on having a public hearing on this item September 23, which should be the fourth Tuesday of the month of September in this building at 5:45 PM at 111 South Cherry Street. Next steps, if that, if after that public hearing, this board recommends approval or denial, that will go before the, the Board of County Commissioners, probably sometime in October. Tentatively, we're looking at October 23. That date may change if there are additional changes that are made to that document. But as going back one other step, we did have a May 29. The Board of County Commissioners had a transportation connection plan study update that was before them on May 29, prior to presenting this to the planning commission on, on June 24. So you ready for me, Sean? I think that's.
Jay, may I, this is Greg Wolfe. May I ask a quick question of you? The stuff we're gonna, you're gonna talk about tonight, is this all on the website? Where can the public find it?
Yes, they're on the website. Now, if Sean kind of fill in more details of exactly where, but yeah, everything is on the website. It's posted. All of this, this information is public. The written comments that we've already received are also public and will be submitted not only to the planning commission, but also the Board of County Commissioners as well. So want to make sure we keep the integrity of that process moving forward. And I think I've already gone through the introduction, Sean. So with that, he's going to walk through the arterial, arterial amendments, and then I'm going to give a brief overview of the housing recommendation.
One last question, Greg Wolfe. One last question, Jay. Will you remind the public how they can submit a public comment by email or however?
Yeah, the, you could do it either through email. There's a, on the county's website, joko.gov. There's a planning link for all of the documents for this, for, to submit documentation. Also, you can send it to us by mail at 111 South Cherry Street, Alatha, Kansas. I'd be happy to receive that. Or email. Our email addresses are also on the website as well. And be happy to, if you, if, if you have a few moments, if people do want to ask questions of us, we are certainly available. I have a stack of my business cards up here that would have my email address and all my contact information, too.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners Sean Penley, County Planning Staff. Thanks, Jay, for the introduction. Yes, just to follow up on that and provide additional clarification. This information is available on the county's planning website. It's under the tab for Planning Commission. So all of this information, both for tonight's presentation and any information going forward for any draft changes to the comprehensive plan, are posted on the county's Planning Commission website. There will be additional information that will be provided for the meeting next month, which we will anticipate at the end of this discussion tonight. There's no action needed. This is just the preliminary review. But if the planning commission agrees, we would recommend scheduling the public hearing for this item at the September meeting. And so what, if that does happen, staff would send out a legal notice and publish in the paper and have a legal notice for a public hearing in September. So with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and go through the updates to the comprehensive plan that staff is recommending specifically related to Carnap or the Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan. So I wanted to just explain a little bit about the purpose of this and the objectives of Carnap. This is a, it's adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, the Rural Comprehensive Plan, and is specifically related to transportation and roadways and for arterial roads in the county. Carnap was adopted in 1999 in response to some of the, the questions and requirements and concerns regarding access on arterial roads. Once upon a time, there was no control or access or restrictions. And, and if you can imagine over time, as traffic increases in the county, there could be potential problems if there are access control requirements or plans for access on arterial roads and just plans for roadway improvements in general. So the plan, the purpose is to recommend, include recommendations for development of both major and minor systems of routes or arterial roads, including parkways and boulevards that interconnect the counties and the regionals roadway network. And Carnap does include recommendations for typical roadway design standards, as well as strategies for ensuring adequate rights of way available for the future, if needed, for roadway improvements. These are items that are included in the current comprehensive plan under the Carnap plan in the, in the transportation chapter of the comp plan. In addition to that, another purpose of the Carnap plan is to integrate access control, as I mentioned, on arterial streets. And that relates to standards that are adopted as part of the zoning and subdivision regulations. There are certain requirements for access on arterial roads, and that's important in the future as property owners are looking to subdivide or any new subdivisions are approved with access to arterial roads. There need to be standards for where access can occur and what, what the plans are for future access on arterial roads. So additionally, the policies and the map of the Carnap are located within chapter four of the comprehensive plan. That is the transportation section, as I mentioned. And a draft, draft copy of that, chapter four, as well as chapter two of the comp plan are included in the packet this evening with some proposed text changes and a map change, and I'll go over that here in this presentation. And as I mentioned, the, the updates that are proposed for Carnap do follow the recommendations from the Johnson County Transportation Connection Plan. That was the item that Jay mentioned at the beginning. If you recall, we had a presentation, I believe it was in June, to the planning commission, where Jeffrey Vos with the Public Works Department gave a presentation on the recommendations from the Johnson County Transportation Plan. And that's really kind of sparking some of the recommended updates of Carnap specifically. And that's also in a, to, in response to the development around the Astra Enterprise Park in DeSoto, the former Sunfire Army ammunition plant, plant. That was, when that was annexed by the city of DeSoto and it began going through major changes for development of that property, that impacted surrounding transportation networks. And so the county needed to address that, as well as other regional transportation issues. So the transportation connection plan was the basis for some of these updates that we'll describe to this evening. There are also general updates recommended for other text changes in the chapter two regarding trip generation ratios and transportation systems. That's highlighted in the, in the text for the chapter two, or excuse me, chapter four. But also in chapter two, this is the land use section of the comprehensive plan. We are recommending a change to the policy area map for, because of Carnap. Although there's no changes recommended for future land use or the policy areas, that map, we do traditionally have included the Carnap routes on that land use policy map. And that's important because, as I mentioned, in the future, if anyone has any plans for subdividing land and there's, and in relation to access in arterial roads, it's important to know what Carnap designation or the type of Carnap designation for the roads, for the specific arterial roads that any property owner has land on. So that's important. So that's, that's going to be in this, this evening's presentation as well. So this is the current Carnap map as adopted in the comprehensive plan. We will kind of highlight a couple of the areas that we're talking about, updates. And this is the same slide that, if you recall, Jeffrey Vos with the Public Works Department presented in June. But it's important to note that, as I mentioned, Carnap is adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, and we do review this annually to see if updates are needed. And the, this is helping, again, with managing access in arterial roads. It helps inform the public about requirements of access in arterial roads. And this is not a construction document. It's not a plan for improvements of arterial roads. The county does not have plans right now to go out and improve these roads as designated. It's a future policy action plan. So in other words, this is just providing recommendations for the types of future roadways on arterial roads. But the area of focus that we talked about primarily was around that Astra Enterprise Park that's highlighted in the red area here. And there were some specific east and west and north and south arterial road connections that needed to be addressed with opening up the Astra Enterprise Park. It, because all of those roads were not actually present because of the Army ammunition plant, there had not been any actual connections shown. Now that that's being developed as part of the city of DeSoto's plan, there needs to be some study and review of what will change in regards to access through that area of the county. So that's what these, I, these areas we're shading and we're highlighting here is just the areas of focus. These are the primary changes, the areas of change for the Carnap map, and we just wanted to highlight that again. This is a diagram for Carnap showing the different roadway types. It starts from type one at the top and goes all the way down to type two at the bottom. And these are just showing different types of roadway schematics for the type two, two-lane road, all the way down to a type three, four-lane road. And so each arterial, each arterial road in the county in the unincorporated area has a designation of type one, type two, or type three. And the least restrictive roads are type one and the most restrictive are type three. And so examples of what would be restrictive is access for driveways, so, or driveway spacing requirements. As you can see in the top diagram for the type two, two-lane, the driveways are relatively close together because there's lower traffic volumes and just less plans for future roadway connections on those roads. Whereas in the type three, what this is illustrating is that in the future, it could be improved all the way to a four-lane type three. And the driveway spacing requirements are much greater because you have higher volume traffic, higher speeds potentially. It requires greater driveway spacing and street spacing, and those are reflected, again, in the zoning and subdivision regulations. So when anybody's subdividing property, we refer to the Carnap type road designation, type one, type two, or type three. And that's, that's just an example of what we're trying to illustrate here. And this is also, again, adopted as part of the comp plan. So this is the map, the recommendations that we discussed. And this, again, was the slide that Jeff prepared from Public Works regarding the transportation connection plan. These are the recommendations that follow from that transportation connection plan. And we just kind of highlight, I'm, I'm going to just walk through each one of these as, as we discussed. Reconnection of the Astra Enterprise Park for the corridors, going through that property, we looked at that. We looked at additional access for a college, 119th Street, 127th, and 35th Street, all again through that area in the northwest part of the county. And studying the north-south corridor alignment through Astra Enterprise Park. This is an area that was always shaded as needing to be updated in the future for access through this property. And so this illustrates that study, and it's basically aligning through the Astra Enterprise Park and aligning with Edgerton Road. Other areas that were studied were the Kill Creek Road alignment. The current Carnap map showed a realignment of Kill Creek Road, north-south, that was in the current Carnap plan. What we are recommending now as part of this is a realignment, or basically to eliminate that realignment of Kill Creek and just stay with the current alignment of Kill Creek Road and connecting with 115th Street and Waverly. This is a much more logical connection following traffic, and there, we identified there would be no need to realign Kill Creek Road. Again, we talked about 111th Street, east-west corridor, basically just affirming that. No changes to that road designation, except actually it's a down, downgrade or of classification from a type two or, yeah, type two, four-lane to a type two, two-lane, basically still, again, keeping a east-west connection, but just changing the designation. There were several other areas that we looked at in the surrounding area around Four Corners Road, Moonlight Road, 143rd Street, Dilly Road and 151st Street. These are all the areas that are identified in these changes to the map. And again, these are in the proposed Carnap plan, and these, again, follow those recommendations from the, the transportation connection plan. So next, what I'll show, this is the current Carnap map. This says recommended Carnap map. This is part of the comprehensive plan. So this is what we have currently in our comprehensive plan. This shows all the type, different road designations, type one, type two, type three, for all the different arterial roads in the county. This is what will be changing. There's not a lot of substantial changes to these, other than those roads that I identified, with changing some of the designations as recommended from the transportation connection plan. But I just wanted to show this for reference. This is the current Carnap map. Here's the proposed draft changes to the Carnap map. Not a lot of changes, again, to the arterial roads, except for those areas we talked about studying through the northwest part of the county. And those are all identified here on this map that show, again, the type one, type two, and type three arterial roads. Again, this is just following the transportation connection plan. The policy area map, this, again, the only change that's recommended for this map was just to show the new changes for Carnap routes on the policy area map. We're not recommending any changes to the policy area map at this time in terms of future land use. But what this does do is it helps show what Carnap route designations are for the different arterial roads through the different land use areas, so that people, again, know in the future, here's the type of Carnap roads that are identified on all of the different routes, and, and here are the representative land use policy areas. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the Carnap map changes. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Jay just to talk about the housing types. This is some other text amendments we're recommending in the comp plan, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sean.
And can I just, Kelly Rass, have one question? I'm just curious, on the types of roads, are there any examples of where the speed limit can vary or change and not go along and coincide with the speed limit that is designated for that type?
That might be a good question for Public Works. I will ask Jeffrey Vos if he could help with that.
Jeff, us with Public Works, we do have variances. 175th Street, for example, is 50 instead of 45. So depending on the geometry of the road, it is potential to have a higher speed limit, but most, pretty much unlikely.
Okay, but they don't have, they're not standards where they have to go, you know, correlate. There can be variances. It is a possibility.
Yes.
Or changes of speed limit.
Yes, if we would, we would do a study, make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for a variance and run it through them for approval.
And Kelly Rass, and would residents be able to have input in this as well?
We get requests for speed studies all the time. We have a procedure that we use to determine what those speeds are. And if we see a need to change them, then we would follow through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, continuing on, Jay Leipzig, I'll just be very brief on my, these last two slides, just to talk a little bit about the housing types in the unincorporated area. This is a text amendment in chapter two of Land Use Plan. Really is the, the, to summarize this, we want to ensure that the, the housing types and housing choices available in the unincorporated area are compatible with what we're seeing in the fringe areas of the cities, which, so that it's new information. And those housing types generally are limited to rural and low, low-density residential due to limited availability of infrastructure. The key to, to housing choice and housing types in, in anywhere really is the infrastructure that's available. And so we want to make sure that, that areas in the, in the fringe area, for example, are, have housing units that are compatible with what will eventually be annexed by those cities. That's really the, kind of the general idea of what we're talking about. So the recommended policies for more variety of housing types within the urban policy area and compatible growth with nearby cities. Also, some additional clarification for accessory, accessory dwelling units, including the purpose and intent and appearance. intent and appearance standards, to be consistent with zoning regulations. The other thing to point out as well is this is not a zoning, no zoning changes, and there's no land use changes that are proposed. This is strictly a narrative addition to the comp plan adjustment in Chapter Two. That's all, it's just a way so that it kind of clarifies some of that language, so that those are consistent with what we're seeing in the fringe areas of the cities. With that, be happy to answer any questions. I know that there's probably someone with carnet, but, oh, I'm sorry, next step, just as a review, thank you, Sean. As a quick review, the presentation this evening, then we will have, if you choose to do so, we'll look at having a public hearing on this item September 23rd, which will be at 5:45 in this room, in this building, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month of September. And then if the Planning Commission at that time makes a recommendation of either approval or denial, that will go before the Board of County Commissioners, tentatively scheduled for October 23rd, which is the third, I believe it's the third Thursday of October. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I know there might be several concerning the carnet update, but we are both available for questions.
Anyone have questions, feel free to chime in.
Yeah, Craig Connell, a question on the carnet plan. If we, I mean, obviously, we need time to read through all of this stuff, but for the next meeting, but if we have questions about logic behind some road, just for that or the other thing, should we save it for the public hearing?
Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. I think if there are any specific questions, certainly you could ask those this evening. Planning and Public Works staff will be available for the public hearing at the next meeting. But if you have any specific questions about any roads, you certainly can ask that now, and we could try our best to answer those questions. Certainly, anytime between now and the next meeting. And again, we will accept any public comments. We understand that there are several county residents that have questions about specific designations. We'll try to answer any of those questions at the public hearing, or if any of the commissioners have questions tonight.
Mr. Connell, Jay Leipzig, also, if you would like, if you look at this and you do have questions, if you want to submit them to us, we'll provide answers. We could send that out in the packet to the public as well. So that might be a good way to address those.
Okay, I'll save my questions for later then. All right, thanks.
Yeah, and there again, just as a general notion, I want to keep this process as open and transparent as we can. And so the public comments, anything like that is included not only in your packet, but also in the Board's packet, too. And we'll also make sure we get that submitted in the agenda packet for that next meeting.
This is Greg Wolf. To the extent the public, after reviewing the documents that we have, have questions, they can reach out to you as well, similar to what we would do. Any other questions for staff about the presentation? I have one question. Can you specifically address, since I know there's some folks who are interested, what is, what changes are proposed related to Edgerton Road?
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley. I'll go back up to the podium and put up that map again, and I might also ask for some help again from Jeffrey Vos, but I'll at least try to illustrate that. So again, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, Edgerton Road here is identified on both of the current carnet map, as well as the proposed carnet map, as a type-three arterial road. What's changing, I guess maybe would be, let's look at the, if we look at the existing carnet map, you'll see that that pink shaded area in the far west end of the map here in the county was identified as a corridor to be determined. So because that went through the Sunflower Army ammunition plant that was yet to be developed, it was just shown to be studied when the time is ready now for studying that because of the Astra Enterprise Park. So we needed to readdress that. But as you see on this map, on the existing carnet map, I'll try to highlight the cursor here, the carnet, or the alignment for Edgerton Road, this is existing arterial street, or Edgerton Road, was identified, is identified as a type-three arterial road in the current carnet map. And it stops at 143rd Street, I believe, or is it 159th, according to this plan because of the Astra Enterprise Park. Now, with the proposed carnet map, we are showing the same type-three designation for Edgerton Road, so nothing's changing with respect to the Edgerton Road in the county. But what we are changing, or what we're showing now, is a north-south alignment through the Astra Enterprise Park, which is corresponding to the plan for the City of DeSoto and the alignment for north-south travel through Astra Enterprise Park. And that's aligning, I believe, is this, basically, it's an area just to the west of Edgerton Road, and aligning with Edgerton Road at 143rd Street. That's the only change, really, is really the area north of 143rd Street. But if there's any other specific questions, I could see if Public Works could help with that.
I don't know if now, I'm Kevin Hogan. I don't know if now is when I should ask this or not, but have you considered going to Evening Star Road instead of Edgerton Road?
It's a good question. I'll, again, let Jeffrey Vos help with that answer.
Yes, we did look at that, and Evening Star Road is not developed through there, and it's not developed for a reason. It's all the floodplains and floodways through there. It would be prohibitively expensive to put a road along that alignment.
And not developed, you mean, what?
It's not a through road now. I mean, it's, there's bits and pieces of it. There's several miles of it, but it's not connected all the way through north-south because of the floodplains and floodways through there.
And it wouldn't be less expensive to go through there, where we're not using people, taking people's land and so on from?
We would still be taking just as much land going through that way as we would on Edgerton Road. It would require the same amount of right-of-way. And also, it would be three to four times as expensive. So, and very, very expensive.
Anything, this is Greg Wolf. Anything else about Edgerton Road that is changing that we should know about?
Again, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, no other changes are proposed to Edgerton Road south of 143rd Street.
This is Kelly Ross. I do have one question. On the last map, there's no green line from 159th to 143rd. So is that different, its current condition, is it different?
Well, I'm sorry, which street?
The map that you showed before, when you said that Edgerton went up to 159th Street, so see that there's, the green dotted line doesn't go from 159th to 143rd, but the new map shows that green line extended. So what's the difference that's changing between 159th and 143rd, just in that section?
I think the change is, as it was identified on this current carnet map, that was an area that was shaded as to be determined. So because there was not yet a plan for development of the Astra Enterprise Park to the north, there was not, it was not yet identified what the plan would be because we didn't know what, if anything, would happen in that area north of 143rd, and that includes that area north of 159th Street. So in that area, it was just identified. There is no plan yet because we don't know what the change will be. Because of the changes now with Astra Enterprise Park, again, the connection was recommended for that north-south connection to align with Edgerton Road at 143rd Street.
Okay, so just for clarification, because on the next map, you kind of make it just sound like the new, what's different is between 143rd and up to 111th, but there is going to be changes from 159th to 143rd from its current condition right now of what residents are used to. Is that safe to say? Is that correct?
Yes, I think it's correct to say that the alignment for a type-three designation north of 159th Street will be type-three, and that is one update, again, to align with Astra Enterprise Park at 143rd Street. So that is correct. The type-three, the change in designation from 159th to 143rd is type-three.
Okay, so Edgerton is changing technically from 159th on up, not actually at 143rd, but does start a little earlier than that.
Being identified as a type-three arterial road as part of this proposed plan, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is Greg Wolf. So is there an existing road between 159th and 143rd that is along the route that is listed in this map as Edgerton Road?
Yes, there's, yeah, Edgerton Road's a two-lane road, its whole length, and goes all the way up to 143rd. If you also go back to the original study, that you can see that that study corridor was always identified as being a four-lane, a type-three, four-lane corridor.
So what, the change between 159th and 143rd on Edgerton Road, as I understand it, is widening the road, making it more lanes? Is that what I'm hearing?
At some point, potentially, yes.
Okay. So this designation would allow that to happen in the future?
Yeah, well, so, I mean, technically, any section-lined road at some point, regardless of its designation, could have traffic volumes that require a four-lane road. This is just the best information on projected land use and development to put this plan together. So just because something isn't designated for a four-lane, that doesn't mean that at some point it might not need to have four lanes.
And I guess, this is Greg Wolf again, just so I'm clear, so by, if we approve this 159th, 143rd designation for Edgerton Road, does that mean the county's going out and bidding to contractors to expand it to a four-lane road?
No, not at this time. We have no plans for any of these changes, additions to any of these corridors. It's going to be when the traffic, the development has come and the traffic is there, then we would look to do these expansions.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Commissioner Poderas, looking at the Edgerton Road, my understanding correctly that from 215th Street all the way up to 159th currently is a two-lane road, but it is designated to potentially be a four-lane road.
That is correct. And again, the, you know, this carnet plan, as Jeff mentioned, is not a construction plan. It's not a plan to go out and make capital improvements at this time. What this is, is really, it's a land use planning tool for access and expectations on traffic based on existing traffic routes, proposed traffic routes. It's setting the expectation for what the land use policies will be related to transportation and access. Edgerton Road, as well as most of these, are in the unincorporated two-lane roads currently. They wouldn't change and be improved until such time as the traffic warranted, or usually what happens is, usually as a result of development. And oftentimes, that comes mostly within the cities when it's been annexed and continued to develop. But again, it's, this is setting the expectation for what is the traffic routes that are planned for arterial roads. And there's a difference between a type-one and a type-two and a type-three. But, yeah, most of these are existing two-lane roads for the most part, and they're following that. We're not proposing any changes other than that area north of 143rd that really goes through DeSoto. But, yeah, these are just setting the designated road types for arterial roads.
Okay, so as of now, there's no plans to expand the road. There's no plans to change access on or off of the road to the properties along it. Is there a forecast of when potentially traffic volumes may get to the point where those plans need to be made?
First, I'll answer the first part of that about access, and then I'll ask Jeff Vines the second part. No, there are no plans or changes to existing access. So if anybody has existing driveway access on arterial roads, that stays generally concerning arterial roads. You have existing access, it's grandfathered in generally. But for any new subdivision or development along an arterial road, your access, which may be allowed, may change. In other words, if somebody splits a property that's fronting on an arterial road, they may be limited on the locations where they could construct a new driveway. That's true, based on carnet. That's exactly what carnet does, is it does set forth those recommendations for whether it's a type-one, type-two, or type-three. There are greater driveway spacing requirements. For the second part, I'll ask if Jeff can answer that as far as future plans.
I think the study looked at a 25-year window of what the ultimate would be in 25 years. So potentially, that would be the window. Typically, things have developed slower than what traffic projections have been, so, but nothing immediate, nothing within the next five years, I mean, five-to-10-year range, would be very unlikely.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Well, I have a question, Craig Connell, I have a question maybe for you. Do we need to make a motion, then, to have the public hearing next month?
That would be, I believe, on the?
Page three?
On that page, they have a suggested motion.
Oh, there is, oh.
Yeah, recommended motion on page three. Anything else from staff that we need to know?
Mr. Chairman, thanks, Jay Leipzig. I was going to mention, and this is really for Public Works benefit, the fact sheet that, this is, it's a one-page front-back sheet that provides a summary of all of the recommendations, an overview of carnet as well, and a little of some background on that study. It's a very good piece that provides general information. And it outlines what the proposed recommendations.
Excellent. I think the next step for us would be, do we want to have a public hearing in September? I think that probably makes sense to get public feedback sooner rather than later. All this information, it will be public record so that the public will be educated on what the plan is, and then we can get their feedback. Does anyone disagree with having a public hearing next September?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion to have a public hearing at our September meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Actually, I can't move. Can someone make the motion?
Craig Connell, I move to request staff to schedule a public hearing to consider additions and amendments to Chapters Two and Four of the Comprehensive Plan. It's recommended by staff in order to update information regarding the comprehensive arterial road network plan and housing types within the unincorporated areas, and to update general information. That is a long sentence.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vos, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will go ahead and staff will proceed with publishing a legal notice for the public hearing on September 23rd at 5:45 PM in this room.
We are not doing the election of officers, so we are skipping to item J. Director's report, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jay Leipzig, Planning Director.
Okay, I don't think your mic is on.
Oh, is it better? Okay, sorry, scooted back. Thank you, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. Just to note, in your packet is the summary of the actions taken by the Board of County Commissioners. I won't spend many time on that, but if you do have questions, please let me know. I'd be happy to answer questions you might have on that item. The next item is the future agenda items in addition to our public hearings scheduled for September 23rd. Also, I'll ask Sean to provide an update regarding our comprehensive zoning regulations update and what, some forthcoming activities.
Thank you, Jay. Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. So the update for the proposed changes to the zoning and subdivision regulations are, that's still moving forward. We anticipate an update to the Planning Commission likely at the meeting in September. The status is, we're still working on draft changes to Module One, which is the main body of the entire zoning and subdivision regulations regarding zoning districts, permitted uses, and development standards. That's the bulk of that update. So this Module One has been a longtime review, a little bit longer than was expected, but we're nearing the end of the draft changes. We will have another advisory committee meeting. There are some representatives from Planning Commission and zoning boards on that advisory committee, so we'll be having a meeting with them to go over those draft changes, and then we'll bring forward an update to the Planning Commission. Ultimately, there will be draft changes that are presented to the Planning Commission, and we will need a recommendation from the Planning Commission, just like we do with our comprehensive plan updates. The Planning Commission will provide a recommendation on that. That'll go forward to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption. We are anticipating this to be ready for adoption by summer of 2026. This is a long review process, but it does also involve public meetings. So we anticipate scheduling public engagement meetings within the next two months to bring this out to the public, have open house meetings, and again, as I mentioned, the advisory committee. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioners?
Craig Connell, one question, Sean. When is this committee meeting going to be?
Good question. We have not yet scheduled that meeting, but we hope to do that soon, and we'll be notifying all the advisory committee members. We're hoping within the next month, maybe sometime in mid to late September. That's the time we're looking to have our public engagement meetings. We'd like to have a meeting with the advisory committee about that same time. So we'll be notifying the committee soon. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the commission, or for the staff? Anything else in your report, Jay?
Thank you, sir. That concludes the long report.
Any other business? Any other business we need to take up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, I do have one additional item.
Your mic on, Jay? I can't quite hear you very well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Leipzig, I plan on doing this, and rather than scooting back from the, from the table, I do have one additional item for you this evening, and that is to recognize one of your Planning Commission members for her service on this board. Certainly very well appreciated, and I do have a letter from, from Commissioner Julie Brewer in the Third District, as well as myself, thanking Kelly Ross for her service to this, this Planning Commission, and also to our East Consolidated Zoning Board. We also have a certificate of recognition that has been stamped by the Board of County Commissioners as well for your service. So with that, Kelly, I will just say, it's been a real pleasure to have you on this, this Planning Commission. I've enjoyed our chances to visit, grabbing coffee as well, and just talking about all things planning and conditional use permits and all kinds of fun things. So, and certainly appreciate your opinion and your service to this board.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. I appreciate everybody who's helped me along the way. I've learned a ton. It's been awesome. Appreciate everybody with patience with all the questions that I sometimes ask. And, you know, my biggest saying is being an advocate for the residents and the little person that might not always have the voice, you know, even though they get an opportunity to have their comments, I still think it's sometimes nice that they get an opportunity to be validated in any way that we can, and hope that all Commissioners will try and do that. The, I'm really proud of a lot of the work that the East Zoning Board has done in that way, where we have actually worked really well with the community, and there's been some contentious applications where, you know, not everybody got their way, but they worked through it, and residents felt like they were heard and validated, and that there's transparency along the way, which I feel like the, you know, every board needs to do. But the validation goes a long way, and I, I hope that will keep, everybody will keep doing that for the residents, just so that they can maybe understand why things are being done. And I think that's fair. I mean, you guys are in the Planning Commission, so you guys have the hardest job at all with change. Change is coming. Change isn't easy, but sometimes a little bit of validation and transparency and explanation can go a long way for the residents, and just give them the chance to be heard and acknowledged. I think that's what I would continue everybody to try and do. And spend, you know, and I went out and spent a lot of time with the residents. I mean, even on the solar farm, I spent days going out there on both sides of the spectrum of the fours and against to try and understand where they stood, and I think that's important to do, no matter what. So, but thank you. I've enjoyed it, and hopefully look forward to more coffee and, you know, learning what all's going on. So thank you very much.
Great. So you've got something to give her, it's looked like. You give it to her now, I guess?
Yeah.
Thank you again, on behalf of your fellow Commissioners for your service. It's much appreciated. Any other old business or new business we need to address? Hearing none, I just want to say to the members of the public who came to see our meeting in person, thank you. Hope to see you next month. Look forward to any and all comments we get from the public. As a reminder, all of this information that you saw today should be up on the website. If it's not, please reach out to the staff, and they will get it to you. And feel free to ask any and all questions, so that we have as informed a public as possible. With that, we are adjourned.